Members, thank you very much for coming out again during the meeting tonight. The one item agenda meeting, which we should have discussed the practice in the nature of the report. In which case, if you've got any part to discuss.
No apologies.
Okay, we'll move into the decorations. I need to present this to the members in person, I shouldn't imagine so. And now, we will take ladies first. That's okay. I think council, or retired councillors, and then we'll go to John. Councillor Strang, can you?
Yes, I can listen.
Which cabinet, please?
The sound is...
Right. Well, I like the script about the... Sorry, I think you have a line.
And you have paper, Christine, can you speak?
I'm fine, I can see the sound is not very good coming from the council chamber. As long as you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I can hear you, Christine.
So, am I going to go first?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I draw your attention to item three on the agenda tonight? The comedy night venue. For item three contains two, includes two recommendations. But I want to talk about the second one, recommendation 1.2, which says, "To resume the use of Villiers Hotel Ballroom to hold comedy nights, provided a viable business case is agreed." Okay? But I suggest there should be another equally, or perhaps even more important provision in this recommendation, which is, "Provided suitable disabled access can be arranged." I'd needn't to remind you that under the sub-public sector equality duty 2010, the council has a duty to advance equality of opportunity between people who share a protected characteristic and those who don't. Disability, of course, is one of those protected characteristics. So, if suitable disabled access cannot be arranged to Villiers Ballroom, by which I mean a really suitable access that people are happy to use, then really another venue has to be found. That's all I want to say tonight, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Christine, and thank you for that contribution. I will go to Ed and I'll come to John Martin.
Right, good evening, councillors. I wish to endorse everything that Chris Drane Clark has just said. Now, I want to mention right at the outset, I'm talking about the same issue. Is the ballroom, the Old Town Hall, suitable? At the moment, I don't think it is suitable. Now, Chris Drane Clark and Ruth Newell retired from the council recently, and you honoured them at that special celebrating Buckingham Day on a Saturday. It strikes me as a very odd thing to do, but it was Chris Drane Clark that made sure that veto was put in place on the town council creating events in the ballroom. But as soon as you honour her, who's worked hard in access for 30 or more years, and Ruth Newell has also joined that particular interest group, that you actually think to undermine that honoural position, and it is an honoural position, is a good position. Seventeen per cent of the people in this country are disabled. You can't always see what they have on. And Chris Drane Clark showed us how inaccessible that ballroom was. Anybody who had a disability and cannot move easily has to go up a side passage that is foul, quite frankly, and full of litter and rubbish, and then slay through offices, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, many has the help of no doubt, or him, but it's not easy. It shows that disabled people are a different breed. They can be treated with contempt. It's not good enough. And there are no disabled toilets in Villiers's complex. What does that mean? Then let me take an example of myself. I went to a business meeting within the Swan Castle a year ago. Now, I have many disabilities, one which you can't see. I suffer from urgency and frequency. I was sat down, and very quickly, after half an hour, I needed to do a pee. Now, to you, you're saying you're going to do it, and you get up, walk out of the Swan Castle bar, cross a corridor, up a narrow staircase, yeah! You can get up that narrow staircase. I found it very difficult. It took me five minutes. By the time I got to the toilet, my pants were wet. They weren't serious, it was incredible. We can get away with that, after, after we're disabled, we're not expected to look or see like you. I went back, and I was very tense. It was two minutes, I had to turn around and go again. This time I didn't get there, I wet my pants. It was a urgent meeting about a book about Royal Latins for helping a former pupil. It could have been Dean Jones, but it wasn't, because he's a poet. Anyway, after my third exit, the people in the pub thought it was a great joke. There was his hat on, a strap on his mug, trying to stumble across the floor. You could see the wet patch that it got there, and lower down his pants. Of course, eventually I went home, feeling awful. That's what no disabled do to you when you are disabled. It's awful. It should be avoided, it can be avoided. No disabled toilets. Villiers needs you. They need your endorsement, because they have no disabled toilets, and they have an awful ballroom entrance to say, oh, people. If you endorse it, they'll get other people to say, well, it's good enough, the Buckingham Town Council, they hold events here. That's why they give you a discount. Oh, a discount. Yes. They can afford a discount, because every time you go there, you make it seem inaccessible. There's mention in the paperwork that the other venues, you make it a loss, perhaps £200. So what? Can I remind you, you're not paying the £3,000 or so money to disabled goers here? Which the disabled goes, as I tell you, which places are accessible and not invited. It was money not well spent. That money could well be spent on any loss. And I'll tell you this from me, it's such an important matter. I will guarantee that if your loss is up to £200, I will pay it personally. Because this is a matter of principle. Other venues are possible. I didn't see any analysis of the Raptor Centre. I went there for some music festival. I was treated like royalty. I could drive right to the front and did on this little retreat. I was the nearest to the string quartet. And when I went out of the fire, I could go three or four steps into a loo that was not disabled, but at least it was very easy to get into. And you say, oh, there's no drinking facilities there. Well, I'm sure if you showed your technique, and the ballpark knew people were coming, they might give a hang of the drinks, bills, could be a regular. And there's a Benson Centre, isn't there? Lovely place, just like the theatre. Great toilets. I'm used to disabled ones, just outside. I got there in record time, I stayed dry, I loved it. I've said, please don't, and a very helpful thing you did, which should veto a place that needs improving. If you don't go there, it will start minds thinking in Villiers. Perhaps we ought to spend some money and get some disabled losing. Perhaps we ought to think about some sort of lift in the older building, the Old Town Hall. Nothing will happen if you indulge them. They'll give you freebies, like cheap discounts. But you will be disowned. I think I've properly spoken.
Oh, I'm, thank you very much, Mr Biggs, for what you said. I'm sure your point actually made, but I haven't cleared. We will talk, I hope you'll stay for a little bit. I think you'll probably learn a little bit from our square here. I will, that's where in the public session, I'll take the public session.
Sorry, can I say, Chair, that this is a very bad place for sound, and I can't hear?
Okay, and I apologise for that, I speak. The, I hope you'll stay for the full debate, and you'll hear what we have to say about it. The, I'll give a full explanation of why the agenda, after I've taken councillor Hartman's position to enter the meeting from home and not come tonight. We could have quite easily considered our way of remembering the council meeting. So, councillor Hartman.
Thank you, Robin. I struggle to follow Chris and Ed with their passionate views based on their lived experience, but nonetheless, I have some things to say. Just three years ago, the town council resolved not to use the Old Town Hall for events, because we decided it was not a suitable for people with mobility challenges. It is on a very high first floor, and the only lift access is round the back through what is effectively a service lift. The back entrance is often littered with waste bins from the flats and dominoes nearby, plus it is a very steep rise to the entrance door itself. And from what I can recall, ours to our colleague, former mayor, councillor Strang Clark, found the experience a very unsavoury one. She felt, and we agreed, that the access arrangements were unwelcoming and ultimately not suitable. As town leaders, we decided in line with our commitments to be pro-inclusion and against all forms of discrimination, that we must set an example and not use this venue until the access arrangements were significantly improved. It is my understanding that the access arrangements have not changed in any great way, although I would be very happy to hear that they have been. As a consequence, we decided to relocate the comedy night to the school hall at the Royal Latin. The first occasion was somewhat dampened by the fact that somehow an alcohol licence had not been obtained, and only soft drinks were served. Unsurprisingly, the atmosphere did not gel greatly. Alcohol and comedy mix well, lemonade less so. I'm really not clear why we cannot book the community centre, which is accessible and ideally suited as a comedy event, although Ed's right, there are many other choices too. But back to the community centre, I well remember one there with Shapu Kusandi. It was a rip-roaring and brilliant night. The large hall vibrated with laughter. Sundays are booked long in advance, why not book Thursdays, say? Or indeed Saturdays? And I'm not sure that it is, it is the only option. It may cost more, but surely everyone being able to attend is worth that cost. To embark on a return to the Old Town Hall is not tenable, in my view. I don't think we should discriminate against people with disabilities any more than we should discriminate against anyone of colour, or women, or LGBTQ+ people, et cetera. Imagine for a moment that we lived in a town where the only suitable performance venue was one that just lacked sufficient women's toilets. Would we say, oh, well, yes, but it is a nice cheap venue for comedy? No. No, we wouldn't say that, would we? So why do we say something different about disability? So we must do the same. To fall back on some hierarchy of discrimination, where some forms of ism are deemed not as bad as others, is in itself discriminatory. And I know the argument, that people with disabilities won't really mind. They're generous people, they want everyone to have fun, apart from them. And just because one or two might say, oh, don't mind me, I don't want to make a fuss, there will be others who are thinking, heck, I want to be there, because I like comedy. Having a disability doesn't mean I don't want to go out and have fun. So being a town councillor means that we are here for everyone, without fear or favour. Everyone. As Ed has already mentioned, nearly one in five of us have a disability. Who knows how many of us have a friend or a family member with a disability? Probably all of us. Now, moreover, if the town council makes a deliberate decision to go back to the Old Town Hall, having agreed in the past not to use it on equality grounds, we are risking ridicule, and maybe even litigation. And where is our integrity if we simply fold over this? Please, I urge members of this committee to maintain our agreed policy and not use any entertainment venues that are not accessible. We are leaders in this town, we must set an example.
John, have you got much more to say?
No, that was my last sentence, which I may repeat, I may, Chair, given that you interrupted me. We are leaders in this town, and we must set an example. And the three contributions have all been within the 15 minutes allocated.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, councillor Hartman, for the point. And before we move into the meeting, I'd like to say a few things to take here. Well, I'm, I'm really pleased that there's a great recognition of disabled people. I was fortunate enough to be managing disabled persons for a lot of my life. And three years ago, I had the privilege of bearing it. So I really appreciate the veracity of what disability is, and I find it quite testing that members of the council would imply that somebody such as myself wouldn't understand what disability is. I understand disability, if you live with disability, you wake up in the morning, someone's disabled, and you have to compensate for, to make sure their life is of a decent standard, be able to go through, and how they can succeed, and have small gains out of large capabilities. So I do take issue slightly, not with members of the public doing that, but imagining that Villiers council members here wouldn't understand disability. We have disabled member with us tonight, councillor Alicia Donoghue, who has recovered from Covid, and come here and adds to her credit. Don't much, we have people in other forms of disability, who are not physical disabilities, as you can see. I believe the town council's been a forward-looking body of decent people making decent decisions. The reason that it's come on tonight is because we thought the decision was far too important to make a decision without our new members of the council having a full understanding of the facility. Rather than a decision to cancel, we're making a, if we agree, don't you agree, tonight? That's the members' degree. We made a recommendation. That recommendation is not a final recommendation, that is a full council to decide to go back, because it was a full council decision to suspend the use of the business site. It's not a permitted decision, it's a full council decision. Councillor Hartman knows that, and he's part of that decision, and he understands the committee's structure. But we've come here tonight with very important decisions to take. I've listened to everyone who spoke in the public session, and I respect greatly views, and I understand views, and you can't that, but I do think that it's an important decision, and members will consider it, and we have to discuss it in full, and all members have to have the opportunity to speak about this matter. It has seemingly today become an issue on social media in advance of the decision being taken, in advance of members who are young, new members joining this council, who've got one of the most important decisions they're going to take in the short term. And that tends to yield oblivion, tends to apply pressure, and doesn't allow for open and friendly debate. I hope you can rise above that tonight, I hope you can rise above that, and we can be forward. Also, offices write reports for members to consider. What, you have to remember, an office report is an office report based on the information they've gathered. And that's what we're considering in office report. There's been no decision taken, because it was presumed to come back to this meeting. So there's been no decision taken, and this wouldn't be a full council decision in any case. Whatever happens is a recommendation. I hope that explains a little bit around the case, but I do take these issues seriously. As I stated earlier, you can't be a person who's lived my life not understand disability, I'm afraid. And I would challenge anyone to say that, in the strongest possible terms. But in saying to that, I thank you again, and nothing I said is meant towards any offence, it's a piece of statement of fact, and that's all it is. So I move in now to the agenda items. I won't take interventions, I want to have a short aftermath. I think we have to discuss a report, be sensible, and be logical, and discuss a report. Which is item three, which is the company report. Now, I've had guidance through Clark on this. Is there anything I've said which we need to add additional information to the report on the basis of how the report was drafted and why the report was drafted?
No, the only additional information is from the members who visited the venue on Friday.
So the report is in the public domain. Who took the decision to allow new members of the council? Who took the offer, and who was able, it's definitely you took it, and who was I able to take it?
So councillor Davey, I think, would have liked to attend, but we couldn't, went at the time of councillor Davey was available.
There's any options given, but...
And so councillor's heading certainly. And I don't know if you did attend to visit Villiers on Friday.
I wish to speak then.
Yeah, you can also speak.
I'll just, I'll...
Were a disability, and a burden to this decision, so that in itself is a disability, having a job. And so we have to take that into consideration. I don't want any proposal, I want people to talk about the report, and I'm there.
Thank you very much, that went to Villiers Ballroom on Friday. And that was important to me, because I'd never gone up in that lift. And I was shocked, I had been up to the alleyway that gives access to the lift, but I was quite shocked at the, not only the state of the alleyway, but the gradients and the interacting gradients in the gully. And I think a member of staff that showed us around, she'd never been, and she's relatively new, and she'd never been in that lift before. And it was completely unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. Councillor O'Donoghue was in her mobility scooter, and I was standing close in case it tipped. And, you know, I was really concerned, because the angle that she had to drive up was so steep. I felt it was dangerous. I don't think we should expect anybody to use that lift in this. It's not a pleasant experience, it's not a good place to start. It also seems ironic to me that this proposal should be considered so soon after we made former councillor Strang Clark a free woman of Buckingham. So we've done that, we honour her in that way, and then we say in others...
I just call you up there, the decision had nothing to do with councillor Strang Clark, it's not...
I know.
The two things aren't linked, so please don't leak that.
But, it, but it does show to people with disabilities that we're not... And particularly in that situation, it's okay, we'll honour you, but we're going to put on an event that's not accessible to you, and it seems to me to be a retrograde step. I don't have an issue with Villiers holding private events, weddings, conferences, et cetera, in the ballroom. However, it seems to be very different for a public body to be doing this. I do think we need to consider other venues. I understand the issues about cost and about running events at a loss, but if it means that we can't have a comedy night, because we can't find a suitable venue, then so be it, but I still hold out that we can. I do understand that the council wants to hold comedy nights, I've been to two, and they've been great. But I don't think we should be doing it in inaccessible premises.
Thank you. Take councillor Davey for then.
You had to go before I did. Um, I didn't, but seeing as I'm not the new councillor, this thing was arranged for. I think at some point we possibly like to hear what I made of it.
Yeah. Right, okay, and he's not called, I'll just work that way. Councillor Davey, then councillor's to Everton.
So, yeah, unfortunately, the visit was arranged during my working hours, I wasn't able to go. So I can't comment on the sustainability of the venue. And I did raise the question in the last meeting as to whether anything had changed since the council made the decision to stop using it, and I was told that it hadn't. So therefore, I didn't believe at that point, and I've not heard anything so far that's so disusing me of my feeling, that we shouldn't be going back there for events. I would have been, I would have liked to have seen reports on other places that the staff have actually looked at, and to be able to actually assess properly the pros and cons, perhaps, of those different places, just to be, have in the report that no other place has been found, doesn't really give us any, anything to work on. We don't have a list of what places have been viewed, what the costs might be, what the services might be. There's, there's talk about the community centre, and we'd have to lay on the bar. There are outside bars available. When we were using the ballroom, Villiers Hotel was supplying the bar themselves. So therefore, they were making profits out of the bar. There are people that do outside bars to bring in, so there wouldn't be an initial outlay for the town council to do that. And normally, in that case, the person who's running the bar gets the temporary event notice themselves, which is cost £21. So it's like you're going to break the bank, really, anyway. But, so, yeah, from those points, I think, I think at the moment, I have to say that there's nothing, this disappears to me of the thought that we should either not hold comedy nights at all, or we find somewhere else, because I don't believe that Villiers Ballroom is the right place to be going.
Thank you very much. Councillor Everton.
Well, I, I only came to Buckingham in the dining days of 2017, and I was quite severely mentally ill at the time. So I really didn't, I tried to move. And then I had, I had help, and I, I have got better. And then, just as I'm beginning to come out into the world, we had the pandemic. And then, so I had never ever set foot into either the ballroom or the hotel. It's, no, I tell you, I did go into the hotel as the pandemic restrictions were easing back in the summer. And it was my first step out into the world that we were allowed to go into. And I, I took a weekend, but I'd seen advertised in the paper. And I thought, well, I really want to support my own community, actually. I don't want to go zooming off to somewhere abroad or something. So I went to the, the site visit on Friday, and I proved how I was about, where I was going, because the others who were in the bar were watching me wandering round and out, trying to find a way in. I thought we would need to keep in there. But then when we went out and had a look, basically, I've come to the conclusion that everything inside the ballroom, and I'm only talking about the ballroom, I'm not talking anything about the council's opinion of the hotel, or what we should be doing with that. That's a completely separate issue. But everything inside the ballroom building is fine for disabled people. But the outside bit, I won't lie, it's absolutely awful. It's terrible. But how on earth could it ever be improved? I'm not an engineer, I have no idea, but I just do not know how... I'm not an engineer, I have no idea, but I just do not know how it could be improved. If you kind of do something to flatten out the surface, well then there's a massive break step up to the door. So it just absolutely made it say what could be done. And to cut a long story short, there are problems with all of the other issues, all sorts of the other venues for various reasons. And for me, it boils down to, it's either at the ballroom or nowhere. And I think that that is a massive pity, that because it is difficult for some people, then nobody can go. And it seems just terribly dogged and dangerous to me. So I would support trying the ballroom again. And also the disability activities must be provided in all circumstances. Except for things like schools and hospitals and essential services, it says for other things. Reasonable steps have to be taken. Now, how much is reasonable to expect something to be done about that outside? It could be smartened up, it could be smartened up a lot. But how it can be made completely disabled friendly, I'm just, I'm at a loss.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the town clerks some points that I think need clearer about venues before we move to councillor Tony. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the officers wanted to alert at collection venues before bringing the report to us. They, we could not use the community centre, which is a building we owned, because it was not available, is that correct?
So, yeah, we didn't specifically visit venues in the court because we had worked with them in the past. So the community centre was block booked on Sunday nights. And it's quite a difficult venue practically to run a comedy night from, such is not much green room space, for example. And the practice of doing a whole setup and whole take down just make it more difficult. So A, for the foreseeable future, it's not available on a Sunday night. And the only time we can run a comedy night in Buckingham is Sunday night, because the other nights, communities have better venues to go to. Whereas they will sometimes come to Buckingham on a Sunday night because there's not much else going on. So that's why it comes not always on a Sunday, not in the past. So they're kind of stuck with Sundays. So that was maybe the community centre.
And the university, especially which was mentioned. Mr Brimstad brought up the university in his session about the access to the university. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there was discussions that had about those venues and suitability about those venues and access to it.
So obviously, we haven't given a detailed report on other venues, which we could come back with that, although whether that's really, if that is what we have, how can we bring that back? I think one, some issues with universities were smaller capacity. And actually, it's more elective theatre than is a comedy venue, especially in terms of fields, and it's harder to do.
Was there any other venues we looked at in the sense that, I think that it was mentioned, I think councillor Harvey mentioned it about the, we done a taproom at Chilwell Grammar School. What was the, had we looked at the Grammar School site again, or had we, because of the pandemic, lost that connection? Because you've got to, the members, we've had an election after a pandemic and we've worked very hard to try and get any venues, such as you mentioned the civic society venue, we had to move that three times to actually make it happen. And officers have been working against huge difficulties with legislation. And the committee early on in the year before the election took some decisions to push on, believing that things would open up. Did we go back to the Grammar School again or not?
We haven't spoken to them more recently, but the issues with the Grammar School were the way it felt again feels like a school, or it doesn't feel like a comedy venue. And the price was more, we did get the price down because we found someone who could do lighting and sound for us, but they're now retired, so again, the price would drop again. So again, there would be a cost issue, but also it's about, because the aspiration is to go back to winning calls with comedy nights. So it has to be somewhere, the communities will come to it, it does feel like a comedy venue. That's a very subjective thing.
There's nothing else that we have discussed, and I think it is important, you know, because it's quite an emotive issue that we put these things in the public domain. And I'm not meaning to tell other councillors to speak, I just thought it was an important part in the discussions that that information was available to members who may have heard it at the next meeting, or may have not, are privileged to hear it in previous meetings. Councillor Tony?
Thank you. Just got a few things on this. As Paul's already said, the community centre was a free on a Sunday. The agent that was, that's being used was asked about other nights that could, you know, Amanda asked, could they be held on a Friday and Saturday? And he said that the top guys that we've had before just wouldn't come to our night. Because there's bigger venues like the Waterside Theatre in Elsbury and Oxford and Mount Macquarie's that have got bigger budgets. And they can get more money by going to Elsbury on Friday or Saturday night. So they just won't, we just won't get, like Paul Chelby and Joe Donnet wouldn't come to us again. When we went on the tour, the Villa's manager, she's a new manager. She says that there will always be a member of her team with us on the night. And if anybody's got access issues and needs to use the lift, then they'll be escorted around and helped. And in fact, when myself and Christine handed the tickets on the door, herself and her husband Peter were offered help by the doorman. But they chose not to use his assistance and went in the lift by themselves. There were a couple of ideas that were posed to the new manager. So I said, could a stair company be asked to just evaluate the staircase? It's massive, it's big, and it's a listed building. She said that she couldn't see it happening, but was willing to take that back to the owners of the Villa's. So that was a positive. And the bins down stairs, when we were looking at the gradient of the whole area, I could see that the easier way to come up to the lift was right at the beginning of the alleyway. And unfortunately, there are bins and there is mess there. But the new manager said that she'll have that cleaned, so the bins will be moved. And Amanda actually said that she doesn't think the bins were in that position previously. Because getting anybody up the other gradient in a wheelchair would be near impossible. And we said that if she will get the bins moved and pressure washed down, we'll go back and have another look at it. So again, that was a positive, because we couldn't judge that area because we couldn't access it. So that was good.
So there was an issue, correct me if I'm wrong, when you tended it, seeing as it was the issue of the gradient stroke, the bins was quite, didn't it?
Oh, it's awful. I mean, I did go up the gradient and these guys thought I shouldn't have done, but I've determined to get on that.
Yeah, that sounds like you.
Yeah. Villa's, they did make a ramp at the front door. So when myself and my friend Christine were doing the tickets on the door, the ramp was out for her. And there's comments about there being a disabled toilet. He was just talking about Villa's hotel, not the ballroom. Because everything's on one level, once you get upstairs, it's on one level. And there's no offices to surf around either, it's just you come out the lift and it's a corridor. And then you're in the ballroom, and you've got the same toilet there, and you've got everything on that one level. So we did ask her if any hivers complained about the access. And she said, no, they're getting regular bookings from private parties and corporate companies are hiring at their conferences. So got a possible proposal.
Can you, I'll hold that now and then, and deep talk. No, okay, I just want to let everyone have a chance to speak. Because, you know, it's whatever. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Well, I live with a person who was severely disabled, so before we get on the I also think that the councillors are not aware of how many councillors there are here, which has that issue that they've lived with. I am clearly with somebody who's severely disabled. Yes, and I have been to the ballroom. And I pushed the lift here. I'm into the lift for events. The toilets are fine, has an issue of urgency, this is going on for twenty plus years. So we have. Of course, I took my wife to the breast screen, you have no lift, you have metal stairs, I can't push it, wheelchair. They said, okay, on high weekend, which I did. And they said, yes, okay, we'll try and sort something out. Last week, I got another letter, exactly the same, please ask, this is my, go to a test course and get your breast screen done. We're talking about disability for a comedy night, there are more serious issues, we are like the NHS, who are not addressing it. So to me, the comedy night objection is to me, a person who lives with disabled persons are petty. And my wife wrote, if she can't attend, she doesn't see why other people in Buckingham, the twenty plus, can't have a good time. So my proposal is that we, yes, we carry on with the old town hall. Now, just to go back to a stair lift, you can have a stair lift, but how are you going to get the equipment? Wheelchair, scooters up the stairs on a stair lift. That is, you have to look at, at the rubber and the visualist and you you have to be a disabled person or a disabled person to see all the small things that happen, try and get the person comfortable. And yes, we have attended comedy nights, we have been to other events in the ballroom, and yes, we have managed. So to me, to me personally, I think that that is suitable.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. I'm conscious that councillor Ronwood hasn't spoken and Dean James hasn't spoken, he's here as a co-operative member for the university. So I'm not sure which way around do you want to speak. Do you want to do you want to hear the members on it? It's important that we hear from everybody before we rush into any decisions. Mr Dean James?
I don't think it's a straightforward, right or wrong kind of discussion, because there's lots of things involved that we have to unpick. And what I would say, and something perhaps we have to be careful about, is that the fifteenth of October twenty eighteen, a motion was put forward by councillor Christopher and Clark, who happens to be somebody uses a wheelchair chair on a daily basis. The motion was put forward, I think it was accepted by seven members, and not passed by one, or not accepted by one. The only question I'd ask is what's changed, the things changed, the president on this committee anymore? So the fact that her voice isn't on this committee, does that, does that give members a right to change their mind, to think differently, or something else cropped up that's made that decision that was made in two thousand and eighteen?
No, just that it's cropped up, it's just that I've got to town clerk after.
They're not cropped up, it's in the right manner.
I suppose the reason the report came around in the first place was the issue that it's become unless a member's tied otherwise, it seemed to us in the office that we've reached a situation now where either run a comedy night at Villa's, or we'd stop to find any way to make it viable. Whereas at the time the decision was made, it wasn't a decision about stop doing comedy nights, a decision about stop doing Villa's, and we hadn't tried some other places. But I think that's the bit that's slightly changed, is this sense of actually, is there anywhere else viable? Now, that might be, if you want to go back around again, but that's the kind of the reason that we got to the point where we are. It was about, actually, I know there was a decision to stop doing Villa's with accessibility, but that decision didn't include and therefore we're stopping doing comedy nights, it was implicit as something that would be a better option once we found it.
My response to that, because I don't, I wouldn't say for a second that you disrespect or go against the integrity of that.
No, I don't intend to, because that officer's report, and I have to be very careful.
Exactly. But also, I know that this is a very, is and was a very wrong choice, councillors, I'm not questioning that. But I think, I think the response is valid. Is there an alternative venue? I think there is, and that's the key thing, I think there is. I think Instagram has given us three or four different options. And it might involve either making less money on it, making it less financially viable, it might mean that we have to change the night. If you're thinking about making something inclusive, accessible, and embracing diversity, all of those things, then you have to make those reasonable adjustments, I think. But that's, that's my personal view on it, it's not necessarily representing any of that.
It's fine, it's fine. I'm going to take, Ron.
Can I just make a comment and say the other thing that's changed is that I've come to it new, and I'm looking at it with a different glance.
Thank you.
The, I understand that the venue is just not suitable. But again, you know, I quite agree with a lot of the comments that you're taking. Is there any way that we can possibly say to the audience, well, if we use your venues, can we have it on condition that you better access for the better access for accessibility needs? And is it possible to give a report on this, say, every six months or something? You know, make it conditional that you know, these, that we need to expand our audience and also, you know, be inclusive of everyone.
I think, I think I would pass, well, one of the reasons I was personally keen, new members got to look at it, obviously, councillor Davey himself worked all the time and that didn't happen. So I apologise that there was no, from my point of view as chairman, I didn't arrange a meeting at times, I apologise, that didn't happen. I think that was a mistake. In the future, we should got to consider those, because that's an extra burden. I think we've got to do no harm, in my view, and do the right thing, is equally valid. But I would also say personally, I think today, I just flipped, when I got home tonight, I looked through social media, many of the things in social media comment were accurate and did reflect. Questions being asked, I think at some point, it started, and suggested that our officers wouldn't do that, and that members hadn't done it, it was unfortunate to say this. But I think we need to look, I think I'm getting the feeling here about asking for proposals, the majority of members here are listening to what's said, I'm not proposing at this stage, are resonant to use the facility. But open to the facility being improved, which would be a good thing, over and above the decision that the facility is improved. Because fine, actually, the state for organisation isn't inclusive. Do you part with another report, an in-depth report, which we could all work on collectively, to try and hone down whether there is another venue that this is. So what we're doing is lose the comedy night for her sake at this stage, because if we lose the budget for the comedy night, I can assure you, getting a budget back into presets to do a comedy night would be a difficult thing. Or do we lose the budget for the comedy night and reinvest it in some house? Or do we just go out and do a deep Or do we just go out and do a deep draw now? When I say deep draw is ask our officers to go away and bring back a report with all other facilities in the town. And I'll turn that to the town, but I think that's where we should go, at the moment, I think we haven't got the majority here to move forward with the recommend. That's fine.
Thank you, um, I think that you might have got, uh, the right proposal which I just talked. So, my proposal is going to be that all the venues in town are looked at, um, and break down the costs, the pros, the cons. Um, and members can all read that and have a, have a better understanding, which is not just, you know, vocalised, it's in a report. Um, and in the meantime, the manager is going to sort out the outside area, hopefully, before the next TC and E meeting. They've done the clean up, we'll, we'll perhaps do an evening, so not in work time for the guys at work. Um, and obviously for mine, we're tonight, so that would be difficult.
All, all, uh, sorry, it's difficult.
We do something.
It would also be good to see, sorry, to see what the lighting's like round there, because bear in mind that these people will be going in and out of there in the dark.
Yeah, so, so that was lovely, it was a challenge.
Okay.
Actually, you don't need a special appointment to go there, the, the area we question is outside, anyone can go and look there anytime.
I do, and I, I'll come to councillor Mari here, is it contrary to what?
I just really want to make a point of, having listened to everyone write it, as the example I gave you about, uh, breast screening. So, because my wife can't have a breast screening, the issue is, nobody else is looking at she, because she can't have access. That's exactly what we're doing for the comedy night, and, and I just find it so possible, uh, you know, that we were stopping other people having breast screening just because my wife doesn't have access to them, and that, that's the same, stop, let me, please don't interrupt. And the same you can apply to the comedy night, not everybody can make access, have access to it, but that doesn't mean that we suddenly stop everybody else going there. If you want to make the effort, like I did when my wife was a civilian, then you make the effort to get to the Villiers.
I, I, I respect, I respect strongly, and I, I understand that point, but the point is not the point about the access for the NHS to your wife is atrocious, and this is something I think that Mr. Richard Galt is listening here from Axis Law, and, and he would be a strong person to be an advocate, to support that, that is something we need to take on as a separate issue, because that is wrong, and that is emotionally wrong, physically wrong, and I'm really horrified to hear that. The point that the, what we're doing here is trying to edge towards a situation where we can both do a comedy night. I think I'm correct in saying a comedy night, which is interesting, is a comedy night that, that meets our aspirations. And, and by looking at other venues, which has been proposed and not seconded, we could have a report, and in the interim, we may, even if we choose not to use Villiers, we would have got some improvement in Villiers, which wouldn't be a bad thing for the sake. So, I apologize to come back again, councillor David.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to second, um, um, councillor Dr. John Hughes', um, um, proposal. Um, and secondly, I'd like to say that, um, councillor Mari's wife to not be able to access that service is absolutely appalling and is abysmal. And, um, but that is the National Health Service, or the contractor to the National Health Service, that is running that, that, so, breast screening truck in Tesco's car park, that is their problem and their choice that they have made. We are here making another choice, and that choice is whether we, um, we take into account um, the fact that Villiers' ballroom access isn't by no means ideal. And I don't think anybody around this table will, will say, um, otherwise disagree with that, um, um. We, as a, as a, as a body, I don't believe should be making the choice to, um, basically discriminate against people, as the contractor, um, for the NHS, for running the breast screening programme has done by putting them in a truck with a man's circle, so.
Before we hear the proposal on that, I would like to see if any person would speak that, but I would like to add that, uh, separate proposal, which I think, having heard it from councillor Mari, we cannot step aside from this. We are all decent people, trying to do decent things, and, and can I ask through town clerk that we either bring that item to an appropriate meeting, um, to discuss that disability access of the screening? Because that's horrifying, um, that's, that's discriminatory in the third degree, and, and a woman in our community not able to get breast screening because of a set price there is wrong. Is, are we able to do that with the council's standing orders, to do that to a future meeting? Or are you able, on the basis of what we want to work with councillor Mari, I'll write a letter to the NHS, and we would support that as a committee, are we able to do that, councillor Mari? But I, I don't want to answer that, because this is regarding councillor Mari's feelings, and we're not going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to either work with councillor Mari on a letter, or we could prefer it, technically, it would be in the form of.
Well, that's one way, you've got to go through full council planning and then you can, unless I can call them, Madam Mayor to step in and, and, and take that position, we shouldn't do that for two meetings, which is happy to do that, Madam Mayor. I don't think we can move on, maybe, you know, with that, if it's, it's a person's, you know, valuable person, you can't do that. Um, are we happy to agree that we ask Madam Mayor to write that letter?
From the town clerk on there.
Yeah, yeah, we've got it, it's the town clerk, they're not going to pass it on. Now, moving to the proposal and the second, uh, before we take that, is there anyone who wishes to, um, make amendment? Or there is to propose contrary, or should have all got any additional information which hasn't actually been said, town clerk?
Really minor point, um, just if you want a report brought back with more detail, obviously, we do want to do that properly. That might not be ready for the December meeting, so we might be looking at February the twenty first to bring that report back, so just to set expectation. But I suspect you, well, if you do that properly, we'll do it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, I would also add to the report, um, what changes, as I'm a big believer in accountability, what changes that those facilities have within the next six months, um, for broadening access to their facilities? Uh, if they've got any sort of ideas or any sort of, um, impacts that are directly coming into the service, uh, which they provide, I would, I would try and also add that into the report.
What?
To list it early.
I, I, I think what.
For all.
Well, I would suggest that maybe.
But for all of the, all of the venues that we look at, that's what I'm hoping.
I think what I was doing is to come at this, is, um, I would probably, is that maybe, um, would be a good idea to a future meeting, um, discuss a report about, um, what we would, key issues that we want when booking a venue, so that we have a key indicator of what we expect out of it, which is agreed by members against known parameters, so that when we look at the venue, we can judge it against known disability things, because, um, there are, you know, there's lots of disabilities, um, and, and all sorts of type of disability, from hearing to sight to, um, mental impairment, and, and, and the ones which aren't seen are the ones which people quite often struggle for in life with. And I would do need to do that, so we'll never be happy to ask that, um, and that's a long report, a difficult thing to look at, and I'm not asking for a time limited, a future date. We ask the town clerk to bring something back to us, so that we can, um, to, to have known leading parameters. It's usually when we're making decisions to have that as a key in, in the margins, so that.
A tea box in there.
A tea pot, and that we can do that, which may avoid councillors who aren't members of the committees feeling isolated from a decision, or believing that we as members are going to make a decision which is wrong, which I, I know everyone round here is a personal, you know, I always respect everybody, and so I think we need to do that, because I don't think that what I've seen today is represent the council in the sense, there's been a large discussion on social media, which we haven't responded to, Sniders didn't respond to that, a proper response, um. So, I think that hasn't helped, but I think we need to work with the way between ourselves, how to improve that, um. But I bet Madam Mayor, you'll move for that.
Thank you, just a couple of things, I think that's a good idea to get a list going. Can I suggest we have absolute requirements, so if, if there isn't A and B, we don't use it. And maybe C, D and E are things that we will prefer, but it's not a deal.
They cannot write the report, they're.
So, but just so that that's, and the other thing is, well, I'd like to have the proposal read out, so we're very clear what we're voting on. And also, as a result of this, as due courtesy to Villiers, that we should write and explain what we're doing, and we probably would have done that anyway, but, um, to, to respond, because we were shown courtesy and kindness when we went round there.
I do, and, and then, we must admit to note, that what I'm saying, would, people would be happy to work, but I'm keen for new people to look at this in the sense that, um, fresh eyes, direction, um. They can come on to the council, it's important that we, we become inclusive and give them steerage and guidance and, and to make influence accounts in a positive way, who would want to work in a small working group of the officers on that report? Um, so that it comes forward, and so it comes to council, it's not an officer's report, is that something, but I'm taking.
I'd like to do say, but obviously, I would, I would work, um, in the daytime when.
Soon.
Um, yes.
And eventually soon.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll be expeditiated, but I talk a lot, so if I tell you.
We have played this role in.
We're playing, playing slow protest, that, so, I mean, that, that may disable you from coming to a conclusion, because some people factor in my brain, um, as I enter the building, but I won't be expeditiated, so I can be with it, I think that's really good, so. The words on that, Madam Mayor, I think is, to, I'm corrected from the, we did, we see officers.
I've got it here, so, um, that all venues be looked at, a full breakdown of costs, pros and cons, um, are put into a report. And, um, yeah, we'll come back to February, uh.
Twenty first.
Meeting.
Yeah.
Is it possible, is it allowed, for the spokespeople that stay in the public session to give their view on whether or not that's going to come at this stage?
No, I think what we would want them to do is at a later stage to read the report and comment on the report. And then, if the report is lacking something, at that point, we value their input. Councillor Harvey's a member of the council, he, he wants to join the subcommittee, he can write to the town clerk, and any member of the council can remain in it. If he wants to, um, and it's about the council making a decision, and then what we would do, would, I think we'd like to access to all, and we'd be right to councillor Strang Clark, and we'd be right to anyone who ever wants new information on that report. So, when it comes to council, to this committee, it'd be a recommendation from this committee to full council, it goes through a level scrutiny here. And then it goes to full council, I mean, all the corners, not top it, so that we don't, what we've managed to do by trying to do the right thing tonight is cause a huge storm um, amongst people, um, they believe in that we're going to make a decision that's clearly wrong.
Social media.
And, and, and it hasn't actually, but it has shown the quality of the councils that we've got here, I think, um, which is, which is a plus. Um, I will go to the, the vote now, if that's okay, on the main proposal, which, um, can you read that? So, we need it, so we know exactly what we're doing on.
Yeah. That's a prepared by councillor Don Hugh, that a written report comes to TC and E on February twenty first, um, looking at all venues in Buckingham Town Centre, reporting, not really certain town centres, no, Buckingham.
Buckingham.
Um, uh, Buckingham, and we look at a breakdown on the costs, pros and cons, and that this information is sufficient available to the members. Is it, did we talk about that the manager would visit, um, and do the clean up at the end of time?
Just before we wrap, a question from town clerk, we didn't affect the budgetary decision at this point, because until March the thirty first, that budget still stays, so as long as that report comes before that budget, do we need to do anything on the budget, do we have to agree to keep it in year mark reserves? We may make a decision to do something, and have no money to do it, and then that would be really silly, wouldn't it?
I, I would make sure that we have been not risking losing money.
You're, you're, you're talking about that, and what I don't really want to do is have all this passionate, and then deliver nothing from it. Um, you know, so in which case, um, I'm going to suspend standing orders after that, um, to ask Mr. Rivers to have to speak after, again, if that's a deal, or just to see what he thought about our decision, um, so in that case, can I ask a move to vote? Those in favour of the prime proposal, which is the Villiers one?
No.
The, 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 the actual going out to the, the venues, yeah?
So, this is.
Do you feel this is a vote? That's a fine proposal, those in favour of it? Say aye.
I'm, 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 that's, that's known.
Right, on the second one, which was to ask Madam Mayor to write the letter to the, um, the, the NHS, those in favour?
Yeah.
Right, on the last part of the proposal, which, um, which was, oh, what was it now, the last pick was Tom now, it was the third proposal, which I think.
Oh, your checklist.
The checklist, you go in a very, I said, I should have meant that.
I'll second that.
You'll second that, so can we vote on that?
Yeah, no.
Thank you, and can I propose we suspend standing orders, it's only used to do this, just to allow, um, Mr. Rivers to have to speak on how we give and how we reach.
Well, it's a class of assessment, very well, and if you're all spread with wisdom and thoughtless, it isn't black and white, is it? Like all of life, it shades grey, but it's important to set an example in life. And I believe you want to do, and I have done in the past, and I hope you will in the future. That seventeen percent of the population are often in doubt. Yes, they may agree and go quietly, but they are the same to all, as they have their rights to. But thank you, it was a sensible discussion, I was pleased to be here, and thank you for hearing me here.
Thank you, um.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, in which case I'll, I'll stand in orders, and my testimony, I have been on to the contribution tonight, and and I think if nothing else can add here, we've moved jointly together in a cooperative manner, we've moved this forward. And we've exposed some really difficulties which are not, thank you councillor Mari, we now know something that we need to know tonight. And I thank you bottom of my heart for bringing that forward, because I know how difficult it is, um, to mention these things in a public meeting, and I show respect, respect, and, and if nothing else, we have to do this, apart, apart from, um, I think the next meeting will be for council, obviously, there won't be a recommendation now going before council. So, we won't have, um, members who, like councillor Harvey, um, part from writing if you wanted to be part of the working group, there won't be recommendations discussed, but can I ask that, in light of the outcry today, um, challenging, and the concern, probably outcry wrong, I think the concern about it, that we um, make it totally clear, this is not absolutely, nothing to do with councillors leaving this council and not being on this council. It had more to do with making the right decisions, and we can't do that without gender in a night, and, and and can we agree that we would like to, the, the councillors, past councillors who we respect greatly about this, and explain it to them that? And can we work on a press release around this issue, because I do believe it's been called, there's been quite a lot said about it today. And I think it's important that we write a very careful, factual press release of why we're taking the decisions we have. And I'm happy to work with Mayor on that, we're happy to do that, so that we, I think it's important that we write that down, that we've got a press release. If asked, if asked for a press release on this, we have one prepared, rather than hobble certain. rather than hobble something together which doesn't represent.
What they do, chairman, don't they, when they see things on Facebook, they can contact you personally.
Exactly, and I feel that that might be the case, maybe we do have to care very carefully, new to the press release around these issues, and that's what we should do. And I'll ask madam there to be involved myself on that, she likes to correct my spelling and grammar. Like everybody is, you like, people get the chance to correct my spelling and grammar with undistressed, and that's my, my, one of my disadvantages. But, but no, is that agreed?
Yeah.
We do that, we may not need it, but it's there for the report upon.
Yeah, good luck, chairman.
And my honourable chairmen, I can certainly, probably for one item done quite well tonight. And I thank you all for coming, and I look forward to seeing you at full council, and and hopefully, we have more, as important as that to do, but probably not such emotional charges for the thing.